Okay, what to do, prayers and everything, right?
Yeah, same, same way over.
Meeting called order, please. Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings in all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in the allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America through our birth and where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Gitcher.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy. Counselor Mersia.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Ten present.
Any moment of silence or memorials? Counselor Mersia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber for Mark E. Finn, son of the late Mickey and Ann Finn. Mark was born in Lowell and was the tenth of twelve children. He was heaven's very special child, known to all who knew him and loved him as Spocky. He attended Lowell Public Schools. Mark has survived and will be deeply missed by his siblings Mary Jo Finn Ryan, with whom he lived with, Robin, Robert Finn, Larry Finn, John Finn, Billy Finn, Martha Finn, Colleen Cookie Finn Conlon, James Finn, Timmy Finn, Danny Finn, and Eric Finn. Twenty-four nieces and nephews, three great nieces and three great nephews. In addition to his parents, he is predeceased by his brother Joseph Finn and his aunt and pal Patricia Finn. Our sympathies to all his family, relatives, and many friends, or should I say, many family members. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber to all those who passed on since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Another moment of silence or memorials? Mr. Clerk, please dim the light. Welcome everyone to the chamber and everyone who is watching from home. This meeting tonight is a continuation of the meeting from last week of unfinished business. And well, just to start the meeting in the appropriate manner, we'll start with the mayor's business, the communication, remote, and Zoom participation. Need a motion to exempt place on file by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Scott. Motion is passed. Last week, we did have an item on the agenda that was not executed, so this is to do a citation on a special gentleman, so I need a motion to suspend the rule by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Yem. And this citation came about about a couple months ago. I was at the Irish Cultural Heritage Week, and this was a gentleman after we made some speech about the history of the Irish-American law and also the Southeast Asian immigrants in Lowell during the 1980s. This gentleman spoke to me, you know, as I always mention, the Southeast Asian immigrants have been very lucky to have landed in Lowell and have some kind people that just have gone above and beyond to welcome us here to the city. And after considerable research on this gentleman, myself, the mayor's office, and on behalf of the city administration and the city councilors, we would like to present this citation to Mr. Jim Haley. Mr. Haley? As you can see, this is a surprise to Mr. Haley. His family brought him here without knowing why he was here. This is citation, but not in the sense of you paying for tickets, Mr. Haley. This is a recognition, this is an award. If the camera could show your face, the look on you, show the surprise and what it means to be part of this law. So I do would like to read the citation to you from here. Official citation, be hereby known to all that the city of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Jim Haley, 2023 Irish Person of the Year. Jim Haley was born in Salem, Massachusetts, where he grew up and attended St. Mary's School. In the 1970s, his career at Stop &amp; Shop brought him to the grocery store on Church Street in Lowell. It was there that he met the love of his life, Eileen Shanahan. Eileen's large Irish Catholic family welcomed Jim as soon as they met. Maybe it was how he could light up a room with his Irish smile. Having grown up with his mother Frances and one sister, a large family was not something Jim was used to, but something he quickly embraced. Jim has been blessed with five children, Jim Junior, Cheryl, Carrie, Kathleen, and Kayla, and six grandchildren, A.J., Shawna, Haley, Riley, Thomas, and Courtney. Following suit with his Irish ancestors, Jim has always valued hard work and has made a successful life through his career as a realtor. In the 1980s, when many members of Asian communities immigrated to Lowell, Jim worked to help them rent apartments. During the Christmas season, Jim and Eileen made sure these families had gifts to give their children, and if not, they would give them. This is something their own kids still remember and talk about, and just one example of Jim's compassion for others. He is a volunteer for many organizations that support Lowell and its citizens and always willing to lend a hand when needed. While his family organizes the event, Jim works in the background recruiting attendees and new supporters. Jim literally and figuratively wears his Lowell Irish shirts with pride. You may not see Jim Haley name listed as an official member of the Irish Cultural Committee or Lowell Irish, but Jim has been a tremendous supporter throughout the years. We thank him for all he has done and continues to do in support of this organization and are proud to recognize him as 2023 Irish Person of the Year. This citation is prepared and signed by myself and the entire city council. Congratulations. Mr. Haley, if you'd like to say a few words?
Is this on now? Thank you very much. This was really shocking. I did not have any idea something like this was going to happen. I think now that's why I heard Eileen say, "Don't get anything on your shirt. Don't get anything on your tie." And I thought, maybe I'm gonna try to help Kathleen with some parking thing or something, you know? So I am completely shocked and, you know, like you said, I came to Lowell back in seventy-five and I was with Stop &amp; Shop and I says, "No, no, I'm not going to Lowell." They says, "Yes, you are." So I went to Lowell on Church Street and I learned to like the people of Lowell. And like you mentioned, the Asian people came in and I bought properties and rented it to those people. I mean, they were four people to a room, a bedroom and stuff, but they were the nicest people to see come here. And, you know, after everything that I've done in Lowell and the people I've met in Lowell, I just am so happy that I got transferred to Lowell and met my wife and met my large family. So thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it.
We now continue the item on the agenda, on item three, orders from the... Right. We have an item here that got on the agenda but not printed properly. This is an ordinance. Mr. Clerk, can you explain this to...
Yes, this is an ordinance that was scheduled for tonight. Due to our technical challenges, the planning board recommendation wasn't accompany this. We just couldn't get on and couldn't set up an agenda, so I'm just gonna ask the mayor to open the, open that hearing and just refer it to May nineteenth, please.
May nineteen, Mr. Clerk, or May sixteen?
May sixteenth, you're right. It's May sixteenth, yeah.
So I just need a motion to refer this a public hearing on May sixteen by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Yem, on favor of the Ayopos, they know the Ayos have it. Motion is carry. We now continue on the regular agenda on the orders from the city manager. Three point one, order of sixty days trial. Any comments or questions by any of the council members? Hearing none. Need a motion by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Mersia. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Gitcher.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy. Counselor Mersia.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Next on the agendas are the reports of a subcommittee. The first one is the Finance Subcommittee of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Any report? I don't have the printed person who was chair of Counselor Scott.
Counselor Scott. The Finance Subcommittee met on April eleventh at five thirty P.M. Present on, present on roll call, including myself, were Counselor Gitcher and Counselor Robinson. Also present were Connor Baldwin, Austin Ball, Counselor Mersia, Yem, Janess, Noon, Rourke, and Parking Director Terry Ryan. The first item that we discussed was parking rates and meters. CFO Baldwin provided an update that there is a need to raise rates so that there will not be a supplement to the Parking Enterprise Fund through the tax levy. He noted that residents wishes to keep discounts in place, and he's aware of that. Mr. Ryan provided a review of the revenues in conjunction with an update on the seventy new parking kiosks that were being delivered, noting their delivery and installation dates, which I'm assuming now is underway by this point in time, as well as conversion to pay-by-plate software that we'll be using. Mr. Baldwin noted a switch to a dynamic pricing model to increase revenues. And Mr. Ryan noticed, noted, "Dynamic pricing will move vehicles into the garages and turn spaces over quicker for added revenue downtown." Counselor Robinson noted that kiosks can be used for advertising now. Two motions were brought forward and passed to receive a report for year-to-date garage revenue projections and a report regarding revenues produced by each enforcement officer. Mr. Baldwin then provided an update regarding the FY two thousand twenty-four budget and provided highlights of the budget, including the DPW reorganization, funding the co-op expansion to help the homeless, the BODICAM program, implementation of a three-one-one system, and increased funding for education, library, and code enforcement. He noted that it will be a balanced budget and that stabilization funds will be used to mitigate taxes, and the meeting adjourned at six twenty-five P.M. Thank you.
Well, it's the next subcommittee, the Neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Wednesday, April nineteenth, the Neighborhood Subcommittee met at six P.M. in the mayor's reception room to discuss ADU's accessory dwelling units. In attendance was the city clerk, Michael Gary, members of the Subcommittee, Counselor Eric Gitcher, and Counselor Wayne Janess, Emilio Espe- Especha, right there, I hope I didn't butcher your name, I'm sorry, Deputy Director of DPD, Department of Planning and Development, and Dylan Ricker, Associate Planner of DPD, City Councilor Kim Scott, and Casey Crane from WCAP. There were twenty-two people present, of which sixteen spoke. Six spoke in favor of ADU's, nine spoke in opposition, and one was leaning towards opposition but was undecided. So sixteen people spoke for a total of two hours. Those that spoke in favor of ADU said, "ADU's, this can empower people to stay together. It's a godsend. They increase housing choice and increase the tax base. People worry over change and they want stability, but this, the world changes. Kids leave home, businesses change. The only constant is change." One man said, "ADU's were long overdue, and this change would allow the lady to age in place because the tenant would help pay the mortgage or the taxes." Another gentleman said that "we need ADU's because it's affordable and will bring down costs to help households downsize. It opened up the housing stock and allows every neighborhood the option to change their household as they see fit." Another person said, "ADU's are the future and will help older people because it will offer affordable housing. This extra income for our seniors will be able to now maintain their property, which will benefit the neighborhood." Another gentleman said, "Think of the ADU's and the housing as a staircase and rise from the sidewalk up the steps to an affordable house and feel safe right up to the steps to the roof." Of course, the speaker was more eloquent than me. This would offer households who might have difficulty finding housing." That was the comments from those in favor of ADU's. Now those residents speaking in opposition of ADU's were... The first speaker said, "We already have a process. ADU's are available now." Comments from some of the other speakers were as follows. "There is no limit to how many occupants. This is a relaxed ordinance and certainly opens up the door to being bogged down. No ADU shall be constructed without a building permit, but we are so short-staffed on city inspectors that people are using extra rooms in their homes for people to move in, and they are collecting rents. Short-term rentals are prohibited in primary and accessory dwelling units, but there are some Airbnb units in the city according to some residents, and nothing is being done to stop it." Under Section Three, which they pointed out, nowhere does it state how many people can live in the ADU's or how many bedrooms can be used, so there is no limit on bedrooms. Let's say one person moves in and has three children, of which two have cars. The rules say one car should be off-street. So now, am I to assume other cars can go on the street? Because nowhere does it say, "No, you can't." Nowhere does it say, "One bedroom." What if a couple moves in an ADU and each have a car? One is off-street, that makes the other on the street. Would this scenario change the character of the neighborhood? Would extra street parking? And what if four single-family homes on the street follow suit? Would there be overcrowding? Section Five, special permit requires, required. In the event that the proposal cannot meet the conditions, go to the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, to have, and have at it. Will, will that change the character of the neighborhood? You can ADU, you can ADU a connected garage, so you lose that parking space. One gentleman stated that a forty-page report years ago by Eric Slagel, that sixty-eight percent of Lowell was owned by non-residential property owners. ADU cannot exceed nine hundred square feet, or fifty percent of the size of the home, at a, at a minimum of three hundred and fifty square feet. Statements were made that ADU's are affordable, so one speaker asked that we visit accessory dwelling originals. I did this, and what I found according to the speaker, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, the limit on a studio bed. So I went to accessorydwelling.org. I did this to find out what the speaker was talking about. In fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, the limit on a studio bed, two bedrooms, two thousand twenty-five dollars a month. For one bedroom, two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars a month, two thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. That's fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Seventy percent of the fair market rent for a studio, fourteen, one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents. For one bedroom, one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and for two bedrooms, eighteen forty-four. Fifty percent of the fair market rent for a studio, one thousand twelve dollars. For one bedroom, one bed, one thousand ninety-nine dollars, and for two bedrooms, one thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. Is he, and they're saying, is that actually affordable? One speaker spoke on the importance of one word, enforcement. Enforcement is not being done as it should be. There are seven cars across the street from this one man's property. There are four in a driveway and three on the street. The character of his immediate neighborhood has changed, and he says enforcement is the key. Another person said that affordability is baloney. Homeowners will charge what they want without rent control in place. ADU's will not be inspected, create more traffic, more congestion, and more headaches and change the dynamics. I want neighborhoods to be kept up and clean. With ADU's, the city is cutting their own throats. I'm only repeating what I think everybody is saying in this room. I could make it brief, but I'm giving you the whole effect. And finally, one woman talked about whether she is in favor or opposed, she was not sure. She said ADU's are affordable and good for parents and children, but she talked about the other side of the coin and how in her neighborhood, she's witnessing an owner of a building who does not live here in our city, but comes once a month to get the rents, who pay, each pay between one thousand and fourteen hundred apiece, and there's thirty people living each in that house, in the basement, and some in the rooms upstairs. I'm sure this is illegal. When asked her to give us the address after the meeting, please don't say this on the air, because we're being taped and it'll be played at a later date, but little did we know it was being live, it was live. After the meeting, she was gone. We didn't get her the address. She was mentioned by one, it was mentioned by one woman speaker to put the question of ADU's on the ballot for people to decide, and I noticed as I scanned the room that people's heads were indicating yes. And even Counselor Eric Gitcher said the same thing. Put it for a vote, put it on the ballot. There is a motion tonight by Counselor Eric Gitcher asking for a non-binding ballot question. I am in favor of that. I would just hope that if people reject it or support it, that it doesn't go by way of the people's choice to select a mayor. All in all, the Subcommittee meeting was very productive. I just wish there were more people to weigh in on this question. That's why I support sending it to the people in the form of a ballot question. That is the Neighborhood Subcommittee, the Subcommittee Report, and it lasted for two hours. And if there were more people to speak and it would have went on another two hours, I would have let it, let it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions on the Subcommittee Report? Hearing none. Need a motion to accept the report as report of progress by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Janess, on favor of the Ayopos, they know the Ayos have it. Motion is carry. We now move on to the petition sections. Five point one, there are six claims for property damage. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Hearing none. Need a motion to refer to the Law Department by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Leahy, on favor of the Ayopos, they know the Ayos have it. Motion is carry. We now, the motion seems to be... Counselor Mersia?
Could I ask a question? Where are we with the vote for authorized payment of the bills for the schools, the, in excess, the unpaid bills?
I don't see, I think it was...
It was six point three, and, and I think Counselor Gitcher wanted some more information on it. I don't know if he got it.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, the, the vote was taken off the agenda by motion, and we're awaiting on the response of the school administration to shore up the information.
All right, so...
I haven't received that yet.
Okay. And, and please have a little bit of patience, because I believe the person that is supposed to provide that information had a death in the family, and it's very crucial that she shore up some things she's been inundated with. She's the only one that can do all this for the family, so I'm asking for a little bit of patience. I, it's not easy to lose someone, and that's the situation here. Thank you.
It seems on the agenda that we're moving fast, like I said, because this is a continuation and the last meeting, we did skip around a lot to get rid of some other items that was urgent last week. So we are now approaching the motions. We'll start with six point one. This is a motion by Counselor Gitcher. Request city manager have the Law Department prepare a vote to place a non-binding referendum ballot question regarding zoning for accessory dwelling units, ADU for short, for upcoming election, second by Counselor Robinson. We do have Regis Speaker to make up the motion. Would you like the Speaker to go first? Mr. Clerk, please call the Speaker.
Jerry Frichette.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Manager. My name is Jerry Frichette. I live at AD Dunbar Ave, and I am currently serving as the Vice Chairman of the Planning Board for the City of Lowell, and I have been serving for sixteen years. I'm grateful for the opportunity to hopefully heighten the awareness of this draft ordinance. that's being discussed. And what I'm discovering is when you mention accessory dwelling unit, it seems to mean something different to everybody that you talk to. And even Councilor Mercer, in her reports, a woman was in favor because it's for parents and children. What I want to clarify is the ordinance that came through, the Zoning Subcommittee and Housing Subcommittee, does not restrict it for relatives. It's meant to create rental housing. Under purpose, it's to obtain extra income. I pointed out in 2006, we had an ordinance that did not pass for this, and it didn't try to mask it. It clearly stated it was for rental units. In Section 3, under requirements, it does limit it, short-term rentals. It says it prohibited in primary and accessory dwelling units. It's addressing rentals. It's meant for rentals. Doesn't define what short-term rental is, is a tenant at will, a short-term rental or not. I think there needs to be broad discussion, and the single-family homeowners across this city need to know what's in this document and what not is in this document. This is for the creation of a rental apartment in your home by right, which means you don't have to go before a board, there's no special permit, you follow the requirements, and you go to the Building Department and you get your permit. You follow the requirements. There are requirements. I want to speak to what's, the areas of concern, what's in here and what's not in here. It does require that at least the homeowner live in one of the units, but there's no requirement for recertification. You apply for the permit, you certify you're going to live there for the life of the ADU. There's no follow-up on that whatsoever. That is of concern. Under conditions, it allows you to build an ADU in your detached garage. It doesn't have to be attached to the house with this ordinance. People are confused with that. Then it also, it requires one off-street parking, but it doesn't say how many driveways you can have. And I'm saying this because I'm going to talk about what the communities around us have. And then, there were some changes, we found out, but the minimum size is for 350 square feet, or 35% of the gross floor area, or 900 feet. Well, 900 feet maximum, that's a foundation of 24 by 37 and 1/2. If you go out and look on Zillow, there's ranch homes in the City of Lowell for less than that. There's no bedroom restriction in this ordinance. It brought up, it was brought up at the last meeting, and it was thrown out, well, maybe we could put two-bedroom restriction. Well, I'm going to talk about that, because the other ordinances around that are meant for families are one-bedroom, and they specifically say that. And then, with those requirements, by the way, if you don't meet those, you can go for a special permit to waive all of that. This is applicable in every single one of the zones in the City of Lowell. And it gets more complex, because it's not just single-family homes and single-family zones. We have traditional two-family zones with a lot of single-family homes that, part of the reason why they didn't build a two-family home is because of the lot area per dwelling unit. Now you can skirt that with this. There's a lot of things to consider, a lot of moving parts. I'm keeping my opinion out of it, and I'm keeping emotion out of it. I'm telling you what's in here and what's not in here. Now, the town of Drakot has accessory dwelling units. This is how they describe it. They are for family members only and cannot be rented out. The maximum is 700 square feet. Only one bedroom is permitted. It says, "Purpose intent to provide non-rental housing alternative for immediate family members or caregivers." Again, we want to be compassionate. The towns are addressing it. This is to create housing. Everybody needs to understand that. Own it if that's what you want, but the discussion needs to be accurate. In Tingsborough, it's a temporary special permit, independent living, understanding that you have an elderly loved one that's having some health issues, and it's going to be temporary. And when it's no longer necessary, you don't have that special permit. We don't have anything like that in here. And in Tingsborough, they asked, at one point, and it may have changed, but it said that the proposed design and plans and provisions should not be more than temporary independent living and the existing residential that is not more than one additional bedroom constructed. There may have been some changes, but if you go out there, Chemsford had it as well. To assure, limited access apartments shall not be converted to a rental unit. The maximum square footage is 600 square feet. Tookspray, you've got to love this one. They may have changed it. They were looking at this, but this is what was out there. These requirements are not subject to relief through a variance. We don't have anything like that. They restrict it to one bedroom. No more than three related persons occupying the family home. I'm pointing this out because at the Subcommittee meeting, it was point-blank told to the residents of this city that this was more restrictive. Our draft ordinance was more restrictive than what's in the surrounding communities. I don't want that discussion to take place in this city. It means too much to me. The single-family residents, the people that pay taxes in this city, that made a decision to live and raise their families in this city, not move outside the city, this puts that in jeopardy. You need to understand that. If you want to embrace building additional units, rental units in these places, fine, embrace it. But have an honest conversation about what's there. This is applicable in every single, every single zone in the City of Lowell. That's what's in there, and those are the items that are not in there. And it needs to be clear. The discussion needs to be clear. That's all I want. Thank you.
Ron Pestry.
Hi, folks. I live up in Christian Hill. I'm like, I want to say that I agree with the concerns that have been raised. I'm also going to make note of the fact that even without the legal concept of auxiliary dwelling units, we already have them. We've got them in the illegal sense, people who are packing people into buildings beyond where the fire code, the electrical code, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Safety codes are already being put at risk. Haverhill's had fires, where six families have lived in a place that was coded for two families. One of the reasons for bringing up the auxiliary dwelling unit issue is to put law on the books so that we can better make sure that people are living under safe conditions and legal conditions. So, in response to the Planning Board thing, the model that I've been told is supposed to be used is what's going on in Beacon Hill. It's called the Great Neighborhoods Bill. It requires, this is me reading directly from it, that an ADU cannot be built unless this house has at least 5,000 square feet in it. An ADU must have a separate entrance and cannot be sold separately from the main house. The legislation includes elements that require that you have proper fire exit, proper electrical, proper sewer, proper septic if you don't have sewer, and that you have to be in compliance with all Title V wastewater and sewage regulations in your ADU. If that is actually implemented, all of the issues that I'm hearing about as negatives go away. And I would state that the devil is in the details and the homework is necessary. I'm in favor of the referendum, because I want the city, just like the planner, to have an honest, real discussion. Because at the moment, in the current situation we have, there are people who are living dangerously. And our job in this is to make sure that we take care of the safety of the public first and foremost. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any more Rochester Speaker?
No, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about ADUs over the last few weeks. And I just think as we rush through this, you know, in a democracy, as we listen to all the way through, we've all heard it over and over again, there's not enough information out there, everyone doesn't know. So I think the best way to have people know it would be a non-binding referendum. What is in that information? That's still to be decided. It's not something that's etched in stone. But a few things that just went on, we just heard a speaker say that there are people doing it right now. Well, there are people speeding. Should we change the speed limit and go up so that they fit underneath the regulations? Or should we start enforcing things and start making people live by the rules that we put in place in the city? Or do we just keep changing things to make everyone fit in the box? Even after the ADUs, people still be living outside of the inspections. Today, I had to call over to the Assistant City Manager and ask him, can you send somebody over to look at something? Because a neighbor had taken pictures and watched work going on, and there's a no-work order. So these are things that people are sending us. We talk about the city a lot, and we have a history in this city of just building. We look, a few months back, we had somebody present to us the Heat Islands in the city. We all care about the environment until somebody says affordable housing. And I want to tell you about affordable housing, because Wellesley did a study before their town meeting. In most communities in their towns, when you go to town meeting, it goes to a special town meeting. So people actually have a voice. They actually have a voice to vote. I know I'm elected to be that voice, but I don't have a representation of everybody in my neighborhood. I haven't had a chance to go knock at everybody's door and say, "Hey, are you for this or are you against this?" I know what I'm for and against, but let's look at some of the numbers. You know, everybody's talking about Arlington and Salem. Well, Arlington and Salem couldn't pass ADUs until the state legislature changed it to housing choice and made it from a 2/3 to a majority vote. They couldn't pass it. And the vote didn't change, it was still 7 to 4. But let's look. Conket, since 2014, they've had 12. So that's not solving any affordable housing issues. And the people from Conket, you think they're going to build in Conket, they're going to come to Lowell? And I think Councilor Mercer had said something extremely interesting. It said 67% of the city is rentals from people that don't even live in the city. 67%. So you think they'd treat it like a good city? That's why we got all the, the issues we have. Enforcement is a major issue in this city, and until we correct that, we shouldn't take on more and more and more. We have sewer issues. We have a combined sewer overflow issue right now. We're going to add to it while the federal government is going to put us under a consent decree. It's going to cost not hundreds of thousands, but towards $500 million to $1 billion to separate the sewers, so we can do that. Unless we're willing to build and get waivers from the federal government to build a plant that's going to be the size of the whole Merrimack River, so that we can actually take in this stuff and clean it and purify it, so we can go back into the waters. We have trash issues. We get them, all of us get them, every day. Now we're going to add more to that, and we're going to add more parking in front of these barrels, and this is just going to combine to the issue. And plowing, I know the manager's office loves my plowing calls every time it snows about people parking in the road and not being able to move them and everything. And I'm sure this doesn't happen, it's a nice sunny rainy day out there, that's not the City of Lowell, we don't have to worry about that. Because we don't even have a restriction on how many people can actually live in an ADU under the current policy. We talk about everything that we want to do in this city, but we keep taking more and more bites at this apple that we can't even chew, and it goes back to the average taxpayer. Some people will put it on, but like, the other night, we went to the South Lowell, I went to the South Lowell Neighborhood Committee meeting. The whole topic of the whole night was about builders taking advantage of the City of Lowell and neighborhoods wanting their neighborhood. And I do think that it behooves all of us just to sit here and say, "Okay, don't worry about it, we're going to take a vote." And then, you know, when it comes in, after we look, the responsibility is ours, and it is no question, just like the mayor vote. There was a ballot question that was on there, and they asked, "How come that hasn't been brought up? How come it's not done?" I don't know that answer. I know that we are swamped with subcommittees and we're trying to move things along, and, you know, we did this for the high school, let's take a vote. But let's put something together that's a package that will work for everybody and get the votes that actually people can live with. Because right now, when you look at the study that they did, you got Lincoln did three of them since 2014. So we're taking everybody from Lincoln here. You've got Arlington, who the one I love that they put together. So since they put it together, they've had zero applications for it. But they can tell everybody in every neighborhood, "You know what, cities? We did this." It sounds good, don't it? "We did this." But they didn't really do it. They got a nice regulation there that they did it, but guess what? They didn't do it. Where's Fall River? Where's Lawrence? Where's Springfield? Where's something that's comparable to the City of Lowell? I just think we're going down a slippery slope, and when we get, you know, the Heat Island issues straightened out, or the sewer issues, or some of the parking issues, or the trash, or the number-one thing, enforcement, is every single counselor in here gets that under control, then we can start looking at it. So in my opinion, when people ask that they want to have a voice in it, and that people aren't being notified, and their next-door neighbors don't know that this is even going on, I think we need to get at least to the Neighborhood Committee. On Monday night, the Highlands Committee had asked me for the latest version, because we didn't know there was three versions, the latest version of the ADU, so that they can actually have an open discussion with the neighborhood and try to get, you know, what's going on, how is this being familiarized? So I just think that it needs a lot more to the public, and if it is a non-binding, whether the committee supports it or they don't, it should go out there. Thank you.
Carlos Robinson.
Thank you. I think some key points have been brought up in throughout this discussion. Initially, in theory, I was kind of supportive of the ADU idea. Throughout the conversations that happened, I've had my own questions that I raised at the Subcommittee, and I've never received answers. One thing, three versions. I haven't even seen the most recent update to what the proposed draft looks like. I think people are being misled information, listening to some of the speakers, and they think this is going to open up a new array of housing options for people just everywhere in the city. And I've heard speakers say that they should have the option to live anywhere they want in their city. This does not accomplish that. I think the proponents of this, that are looking at other communities, I think something was touched on that's very important. This needs to be communicated to the public. What that final draft looks like, whatever it is, the public needs to understand what this has decided. Because in some neighborhoods, even though people would fit the regulations, now trash pickup, you're talking an additional trash being injected into the system. We have a problem with vehicles, trash vehicles and recycling vehicles getting down some of our roads as-is. And I know the ordinance calls for one-off street, but in reality, nowadays with rents, you're going to have two vehicles per house. I mean, that's just the going rate. People have to pay bills. And the people that are in need, I've said this before, if this is aimed at providing below-market-rate availability, let me walk you through it. You have a family that might qualify for subsidies on their utilities. So now they find an ADU, great, we're going to move into this ADU because it's below-market rate. Well, guess what? They lose those subsidies because the utilities have to be tied into the existing. So now, there's one thing that's gone right there. And as a result, the property owner, they're not going to eat that increase in utilities. So I just, I don't see how it's even possible to do what it's being packaged and sold as. So I really think we do need to get the feel of, it shouldn't be 20 on each side at the podium, and it shouldn't be a small minority deciding a sweeping change by right. I think this has to go out and allow for conversation. And honestly, if proponents of this need to inform the public as to all the specifics. I saw a thing today, NIMCOG is pretty much predicting maybe 50 to 100 ADUs over the course of five years in Lowell, possibly. That does nothing to dent the problem we're facing, except for compound some of the issues that we already have. And so I think it's a great decision to move this forward to a non-binding referendum and put it on the ballot. I would support that. Thank you.
Councilor Yum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is probably, if I may ask the solicitors, I'm new, I have no idea that we are the counselor and the city in the position to make some sort of non-binding referendum on the ballot. So I'm not sure, do we have that authority to do? From what I understand, it's normally, any ballot question will be petitioned by the community, and the community will have members, and they go collect a certain signature to have it on the ballot. So this question is to the solicitor, can we, as the city and the counselor, propose a non-binding referendum on the ballots for the next election? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through Mr. Manager to the solicitor.
Yes, thank you. Yes, you can. A non-binding referendum can absolutely be put on the ballot. Not a problem.
Thank you.
Councilor, drink water.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to vote no on this motion. And, you know, there's a lot that's been discussed relative to ADUs. I think probably most know that I've been a proponent of this policy, was one of the original co-sponsors of the motion, and also as the co-chair of Housing and Zoning, have been there for a number of discussions, even going back to, as a member of the Zoning Committee during the last term. Been part of a number of extensive discussions through the Subcommittee process, as well as on the City Council floor on the issue of accessory dwelling units. And to me, from a, I may try to not go too deep into the substance, but stay more on the process. From a process standpoint, nobody's going to understand this issue more than, at this point, the members of the Subcommittee and also the members of this council, who have had the opportunity to listen through a Subcommittee meeting process, to do their own research, which I know has happened among many members of this council. And I would venture to say that just about everybody sitting here, through that process and all the listening and research and and all the listening and research and learning that we've done, everybody here has landed on a conclusion on whether they think this is going to be a positive thing for the city, or whether they think this will be a negative thing for the city. I think this would be a positive thing for the city. But I think this falls squarely under the purview of what the city council does. We make lots of big decisions. We vote on budgets, we vote on bonding, we vote on land acquisitions, we vote on zoning changes. We have voted on zoning changes within the last several months. And if you look on, you know, the city webpage, under the list of responsibilities under the city council, you'll see zoning changes right there, along with a number of the other responsibilities that I just mentioned. It's our job to look at these issues, consider the perspectives of residents, consider the impact on residents, and land on a conclusion whether we think it'll have a positive or negative impact. And it's so hard, I believe, to have something as complicated as zoning. You look at the zoning book and how thick and extensive it is, to try to communicate that to the public prior to the election, it's hard. No one is going to understand this issue and the impact on the city more than the people sitting right here, and that's why I believe the process that began through the subcommittee and many, many discussions should continue, and we should have a chance to vote on the draft ordinance that has been unanimously reported out of the joint subcommittees. I did just wanna address a couple things that I guess are related to substance. One, it was raised by a speaker, I think the term that was used was that the true intention of the policy was being masked, and that was to produce more rental housing within the city. I just wanna be clear, there have been a number of subcommittee meetings where I have been clear that this would not have, that I would not support a restriction that ADUs would only be for family members. I think housing, and the lack of housing, is probably the number-one issue for residents here in this city. I would venture to say, and state, and even nationally, we're in a crisis. I saw this as one small way to address the shortage of housing that we have, and that's causing a real strain on residents of the city. And I do wanna emphasize that it is in a small way. This is one very incremental thing we can do, and some of the other communities were raised, and the number of units that have been added, make no bones about it here. And I wanna raise a city that wasn't mentioned, which I would say is probably the closest apples-to-apples comparison to the city of Lowell. Our draft ordinance is very similar to what was passed in the city of Salem, you know, another city in, smaller, but similar size, fairly non-restrictive ordinance. In the 18 months after an ADU ordinance passed in the city of Salem, they had permitted eight, or there were requests, eight applications for permits, eight, in 18 months. So let's be realistic about the impact of this. This is in every house, not every street, and I don't mean to minimize the impact that this will have. We're a little bit bigger than Salem, let's say that we permit 10 a year. Is that gonna solve the housing crisis? No. But if we do 10 every year, in 10 years, we have 100 units spread out throughout the city, that's 100 potential rental units for people who are in desperate need of more housing in the city. That doesn't have an impact on the character of the neighborhood, because that has a fit with the existing character. I think this is one small way that we can start to address the shortage of housing that we have here in the city, and just to be clear, so nothing is being masked, yes, this is, many people will use this for their family members, for their elder family members, for their younger family members, to find a place to live in Lowell that is affordable, that's close to family. It can also be used to provide much, much-needed housing on the rental market. So again, I don't wanna get too deep into the substance, but I just did wanna address that. I think there's been an outsized amount of pushback on this for what would be, you know, clearly a minimal impact, you know, eight in Salem in 18 months, you look at all the other municipalities, some of which have restrictive ordinances, in greater Boston, eastern Massachusetts, about two and a half per year. I can't see sending something to a community-wide referendum where we look at the impact of this, and we can say, well, do we wanna potentially prevent 10 rental units a year for Lowell residents from coming on, spread throughout the city? I understand the passion, and I respect the passion, and I respect the different viewpoints, but I think we need to put a little perspective in reality on the impact of this, and see if this might be an outsized reaction to send it to the ballot for something that would be very incremental, very spread out, and I would argue very positive for the city. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Counselor, your next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to just thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. I think this is an important discussion for us to have, and I'd like to thank the speakers who came out tonight to share their opinions with us. However, I can't support this motion, and I have a few reasons why that I'd like to share with everyone. The first reason is, I feel like this has already been on the ballot once. Last election cycle, housing was easily one of the top two or three issues that I was asked, knocking on doors, at events, meeting people, community groups, everywhere, housing, rental costs, et cetera, et cetera. And I was asked by many people, what are you gonna do to help the housing situation? And one of my responses was that ADUs can help in a small way, and I would support them if I was elected. I've now been elected, and I tend to keep that promise, and I feel like punting this to a referendum is not in the way of keeping that promise. If it's the way the rest of my colleagues wanna go, I'm happy to go that way as well, but personally, I don't think it's the right move. A public participation standpoint, we've had many, many subcommittees and meetings on this, with input from many community members and organizations, and I think that that process has really served to improve the draft ordinance. We're now in the third revision of it. We'll probably still have another couple revisions, my guess. We haven't had a public hearing on this, which we'll have to do, and I believe that zoning or planning will have to do as well. So there's more opportunities for input within the current structure, and more opportunities to improve this motion. The original motion that started this ADU discussion during this term was filed for the June 14th meeting of last year. That means we're six weeks away from a full year of working on this, and I think if we send it to a referendum, it's gonna reset the clock, and we're gonna be looking at at least another year before we move forward on this or don't. And I don't think we have that kind of time. In reality, I think this is a small change. The ordinance that's proposed is a small change. Folks who currently own a single-family home and wanna add additional bedrooms, or even a second kitchen or living room to their family, a single-family home, can do so today, as long as they comply with all other existing zoning rules regarding setback, open space, life safety, all of that. None of that changes with the proposed ordinance. All those rules still have to be followed. All this proposed ordinance really allows people to do is to put a wall or a locked door between that new space and the existing space, provided they can provide an off-street parking space for this accessory unit. With that said, I feel like this is a minor zoning change, and as Counselor Drinkwater mentioned, zoning is something that squarely falls on the shoulders of the city council. I can't remember the last time a zoning change was put to a citywide referendum in Lowell. I don't know if anyone knows of one, but I've asked that question several times and never received a positive answer. These decisions are why we were elected. This is a core function of the city council, and I feel like we need to move forward and get to an ordinance that we can either accept or vote down. If we can't move forward without a citywide referendum for something of this magnitude, how are we ever gonna tackle the larger issues, housing and beyond, that come before us? So I think we really need to continue on this path of public engagement, subcommittee meetings, public hearings, to get to an ordinance that's clear, concise, everyone can understand, and then we can bring it to this body and vote it up or vote it down. I respect the opinions of everyone who feels differently, and so I'll, you know, take whichever way this vote goes. I look forward to still working with my colleagues and the community members to work towards something that we can move forward with, but I don't think we should be putting this on a referendum. Thank you very much.
Counselor Mosia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Discussion is very, very important, and that's what we're doing here right now. I think that, in my opinion, we try to get and go to other communities to see what the best of what we're looking for, what they have, and get an idea from surrounding communities. Didn't we have a group of city councilors travel to Montreal, Canada? And the reason you traveled there was to get ideas and thoughts about what works there that we don't have going on here, or maybe we do, but how can we make it better? And that was a good venture. I think this is healthy. But when you have a speaker that came to the podium and talked about different communities, and how they strengthened their ordinance and with ADUs, and they made it clearer, I think we have to, I think the whole gist of everything we're talking about, we have to go back to the drawing board, go back to the DPD, sit down with what's the best that they have in Andover, what's the best they have in Drakeett, like the speaker, Mr. Frichette, said. When he came to the podium and he said, this is what they say, and this is what ours says, our ordinance is very sketchy, it's like, it's not defined, it's not addressed, something's missing. That is exactly what we're looking for. I would suggest that we have that information given to the planning board, and how, I mean, given to the DPD, and how they put the ordinance together, strengthen it, or do you wanna make it weaker? I don't wanna make it weaker. I thought the purpose was to make it more understandable, you know? That's why I don't support adding, you know, what the new one is saying, because it's very unclear. So I would like to see what Mr. Frichette said be sent over to you and highlighted, and just add that in there, and maybe that might solve what we're looking for. Because I know people are talking about housing, but we're not gonna solve it by adding an ADU. What we're gonna do is help out a family that has an aging relative, and allow them to have a special place on the property for them. I have it across the street from me, directly across the street, and to the right of me across the street. There's, that is happening. I don't even, you know, it's not mind-boggling, you would never know that they were there. But you can't do what they do on my street everywhere and allow it, well, you can allow it, but it's not gonna be as efficient as it is on my street with all the room that I have, when you take single families that are like right on top of each other, but just about make it, and then you can go before for a special permit to the ZBA and put one in. You have to have rules, you have to stick to it, you have to have enforcement, and so, whether we go to the public with the referendum question or not, ultimately, we ought to shore up what we have and put the best that surrounding communities have and put it in ours. There was a few communities there with different things, that I would've taken this from that place, and this from Drakeett, and this from Andover, this is the best thing of all. This is what I'm looking for. Because when I went around to different neighborhoods, and I spoke, and I said, I'm running for reelection, or this, that, or the other, they wanted to stay with the character of their neighborhood, and I'm not gonna make a rule that's gonna change that. I'm not gonna do that to them. That's how I see it. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I appreciate the speakers coming tonight, and Mr. Frichette, you made some very valid points. So, I'm gonna not support the motion tonight, but I would like to see some changes made to the ordinance that we can vote up or down. I think we've done a lot of work on this, we've had a lot of subcommittee meetings, neighborhood subcommittee meetings, the zoning subcommittee meetings, and I think this is a decision that we have to make the best choice we can for the city, and it's up to us to do it. We've been listening, we'll listen some more, some very valid points tonight, and I think we should just keep working on this and come up with the best decision we can, and then just vote it up or down. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank to all the speakers, and speakers and all this, all of us council agree that we do have housing crisis or housing shortage in the city and in the state. It is our responsibility to study the issues, and I think this council have done that. Through zoning and housing, housing and zoning, subcommittee joined together, allow for public input on this. We did just that. We had many, many meetings on these matters, and there's still opportunity for more input. This matter, this draft, will go to the planning board, and from there, it come to public hearing before the council. If there need to be tweaks, then we do so. I think the, this was part of the housing legislation that the legislators has passed, and governors sign on to it, which also include this type of zoning change, and within this council responsibility to do so. So I would vote no on the motion as well.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Gishia?
Can we take a roll call on the vote?
Before we do, I have a quick comment from here, if there's no objection. When I first read this, this motion to have it to the public to vote, I did like it, because it's something that you want to get the public involved, you need to get, you know, this is a very, as all the council mentioned, whether you support it or not support it, all brought up some very good points, as complex issues that affects different neighborhoods differently and uniquely, and I think that's just one small point in addition to all the other points that have made already. The ADU, it affects different neighborhoods differently, and if you put this to the public, the individuals in different neighborhoods, the different blocks, the different community, they're gonna vote as they want their particular neighborhood, their particular block, to have the integrity, the character, all are understandable. But this issue here is a citywide problem, it's a statewide problem, it's a countrywide problem, and we have to look at for the best interest of the entire city. And in this council body, this is the first body that we have a district representatives. If it were all citywide representatives, I might have looked at this differently, but when you have district representatives that represent your neighborhood specifically and uniquely, I believe that your representative, your council, your neighborhood council, knows what's best for that particular area. So, you know, whether the, you know, whether you support it or not support it, that I think it's best for the district and neighborhood representative, all the work that we have done, the community work we have done, and as many members have mentioned, there are probably more work to be done. So I think because you have elected your local representative to represent you, if the motion come up in the future, as many councils have mentioned, to have ADU or not, we'll just vote up and down the membership just as well. So I think on that point, I prefer to have your elected officials to take a vote on this matter, that's so important uniquely. this matter that's so important uniquely to each one of your neighborhood. With that said, Councilor Gishia had made a motion to do a, a roll call. I'm going to ask Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call.
Counselor Drinkwater?
No.
Counselor Gitcher?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
No.
Counselor Leahy?
No.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
No.
Counselor Scott?
No.
Counselor Yem?
No.
Mayor Chow?
No.
Three yeas, motion fails.
We now move on to the next motion. I see on my agenda that there is another item that has registered speaker. I believe the speaker might have come last week and was not able to speak on this item. Need a motion to suspend item 6.6, to take it off order, and by Counselor Gishia, second by Counselor Janess, and the motion is, was made by Counselor Janess and Counselor Gishia to request city manager send a letter on behalf of the council to our State House delegation and the MSBA urging an update to all MSBA programs to include and prioritize non-fossil fuel options to help and encourage municipalities to reduce their reliance on fossil fuels. Make a motion, would you like the speaker to go first? Mr. Clerk, please call the registered speaker.
Stephen Malagodi. Good evening, councilors. Steve Malagodi, live at 200 Market Street, representing 350 Mass of Greater Lowell. We are your independent citizens, working on climate change and adjust transition to a non-fossil fuel world. I'm going to try and set a personal best for brevity tonight, going to give a shot. So thank you very much for the timely approval of this item. It's, to my mind, a non-controversial item, but it is important because this problem with the MSBA is not unique to Lowell. All across the state, local school boards and committees are essentially being given no choice but to install new gas-compressing boilers in their schools without even the possibility of considering clean and safe alternatives. So we're locked into this antiquated technology with its accompanying pollution, added expense, and health risks for another 25 or 30 years. Just last Thursday, April 28th, NOAA's Global Monitoring Laboratory at the Mauna Loa Observatory in Hawaii recorded a frightening 425 parts per million of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. Evidence of this, of this number has not been seen in the physical record for the last 800,000 years. Should this rate continue or get higher, should this number not come down dramatically in the next decade, this would result in a global temperature increase of 2.5 degrees centigrade and a global sea level rise of five meters, roughly 15 feet at the minimum, within the lifetime of your children and your grandchildren. Everything that must, that can be done, must be done to ensure that this doesn't happen and to limit the damage that has already been done. This motion adds Lowell's voice to the growing statewide calls to revise this myopic regulation and to give local school officials and citizens themselves some clean energy alternative options in the future, to ensure that there is a future. So thank you very much in advance for passing this motion.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Janess or Counselor Gishia, would you like to go first? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Mr. Malagodi for coming down tonight to share his feelings on this motion, I appreciate it. Some of the points that he raised in a previous discussion about the gas-combusting boilers that we're installing as part of MSBA's accelerated repair program in some of our schools was really the genesis of, of this motion and this request. He told us about how Andover, when presented with this option, said, "No, thanks, we're good," and chose to go in a different direction so they could move to a more sustainable and environmentally friendly system in one of their schools. Lowell has been labeled as a, as a environmental justice community. If we're an environmental justice community, we shouldn't be getting painted into a box of only having an option of putting in a gas-fed boiler that's going to heat our schools for the next 20-plus years and have a more prosperous community just down the road be able to make other decisions. I understand that MSBA has paused the accelerated repair program, so in my mind, that makes it a good time to, to make this argument to them and to our state delegation. And when I say prioritize in this, in this motion, I'm not saying that projects that use a greener solution should be prioritized over those that don't. I'm saying that within a project, if MSBA decides that this, something needs to be worked on in a school, they should look for options to be able to, to incorporate greener, more friendly, more environmentally friendly options than what we've got right now. And this, this should go across all their programs. It should be in new building discussions, and it should be in repair and modernization programs as well. That's, that's how I feel, and, you know, I'll open the floor to, to my colleagues and see if anyone has any thoughts. Thank you.
Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Three you two, Manager Goland. Manager Goland, I just want the public to understand a couple of things when we talk about Andover versus Lowell and the MSBA amounts that come in percentage-wise. And, and the affluent communities pay most of the MSBA building projects because of their, their amount of money that they have versus Lowell, and that's where the inequity comes in. We see the inequities in, in big cities that aren't as wealthy, and the inequity is that they're pushing us to a limit where we, we can't afford this. And the affluent communities pay most of this, these maintenance projects out of their pocket with or without the MSBA. So if the MSBA comes in Andover, probably, I, I don't know this number, but I would bet it's in the teens or, or not that far off on how much they get reimbursed from the state when they do these projects. So it really handcuffs us into saying, "We have to make decisions." We have a smaller gym over there because of, obviously, we didn't have the funding to, to do more, and, and it's the same thing with this. The only reason why we don't is because of funding. It's affluent versus people in need, and this is what's happening to these communities. And it's sad to watch that everybody says they want this by 2050. They don't really want it. If they wanted it, they would give you the money to make it happen, and especially in the areas that are larger. We have larger buildings in Andover, much larger to heat. So if they really wanted it, they would give us the money to actually do these things. Mr. Manager, could, could you just elaborate so the public understands the contribution from the MSBA to the city of Lowell versus what it is to other communities and how that handcuffs into some of these decision makings?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilor, we're lucky in that from the extent that the SBA typically will give the city of Lowell an 80/20 split. Now, that's not always a true 80% because we have to really understand what would be acceptable in that number. Also, school building assistance, they've been very good to us from the perspective of they're trying to help us on other matters that we have before us with the, our current situation. They're funded by the state sales tax of 1%. So I think this letter is a good opportunity, simply because MSBA is now, as was stated by the speaker, it's been put into pause. So there's an opportunity, I think, for us or for the MSBA to potentially recalibrate what is going on, and that recalibration could come in the, the sense of different types of fuels. I mean, we're looking right now, obviously, throughout the city of Lowell as to how we can become more aggressive with solar power, solar panels, and things like that. And I, I think that in, in having a few discussions with the MSBA, it really comes to the legislature, to be honest with you, and you know that I work there, is to give the MSB, the MSBA more, a larger ability to loan out money. And the only way we're going to be able to do that, obviously, is to by, by giving them additional funds or increasing their caps. So hopefully, that's answering the question because we're doing well, but we do have challenges. We have challenges here within the city, as we know, with the number of students and the size of the buildings. You had referenced the gym being just a tad smaller than maybe it should be, although it is beautiful. And other more affluent communities put additional funding, local funding. However, we are above our net school spending as well. So I think that, that it's important that the residents of Lowell know that not only are we above our net school spending, and I, I think the CFO, we've been looking at this, to ensure that we remain above our net school spending, but between, it's a good partnership we have going on right now between the city and the state. But I think that this particular letter going to our delegation is extremely timely, as Counselor Janess had stated earlier.
The driver, I think, over the last year and five months for the council, in a lot of ways, has been looking at savings through, energy savings through some of the solar stuff, but, you know, in order to get there, I do think, and we've discussed this off, off the record, but the sustainability department needs to be built up. We can't have one person. In the upcoming budget, do we have room for a person to come on and build that department? Because I know you said that we were looking for grant funding to come in and try to offset some of these positions, but I, I hope that we understand that that's a goal, and I understand that, you know, that there's a cost, but maybe it's not even in there. I, I don't know that answer, but we have talked about it, and, and that goal of looking at, you know, adding to the solar power and, you know, trying to reduce and trying to create, so I'm, I'm just wondering if there is, if we're still looking at that piece.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilor, a very good point. Every council here has brought up the fact of increasing sustainability and creating a department that is more robust. I just want to let all the councilors know that as far as FY24, that is still a work in progress. We've been hindered by a little bit of a hiccup, I'd say, because I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the department heads for shifting very quickly, very, very quickly, when it comes to ensuring that work is continuing, I guess, the, the old-fashioned way, with pen and paper, and I think Connor's even using an apicus right now to make sure that we're all set. Only kidding. But we are, would like to trend in that direction to ensure that that type of department is grown out, because we know that if we have the ability to build upon what I would say is the excellence that we currently have within our energy management team, if we continue to build on the excellence that we have, I think it's going to only benefit us greater. So the administration is, is, is hearing each councillor, because every councillor here has been talking about it loud and clear, and we're going to continue to, to move forward, and I hope very soon that the council will be satisfied with how we're trying to move forward on FY24.
EV truck is one of them, right? Mr. Manager?
Counselor Gishia, you all set?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the speaker for coming down, and Counselor Gitcher couldn't be more on point on this. So he's right on target. We have a lot of schools here, we have a lot of needs, but we are trying to be progressive with this and move forward, so. And you were right on point, Mr. Manager. We're looking into the budget, what we can do for the sustainability office, you will or whatever, so. But good points, and we'll keep continuing to move forward. But Lowell is a big city, big, a lot of needs, a lot of school buildings, I think we have 28, so, you know, we'll keep pushing forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? No other comments on favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. I don't think we have any more registered speaker on any other items, so we're going to continue where we left off, which was motion 6.2, a motion by Counselor Gishia, request city manager have the proper department at all non-union contracts to the city's website, second by Counselor Leahy. Counselor Gishia?
Motion speaks for itself.
Excellent, Counselor. On favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. The next motion is 6.3. Counselor Gishia, request city manager have the proper department provide the city council with a report on the number of reserved parking space for residents of dwelling only, signs that are located at multifamily homes, along with their locations that are not owner occupying, second by Counselor Yem. Counselor Gishia?
Motion speaks for itself.
Excellent, Counselor. On the favor, say aye, motion is, is passed. The next motion is 6.4. Counselor Gishia, request city manager have the proper department report on the geese situation, on what is being done to combat the issue on playing fields throughout the city, such as Edwards Field, Hartley Field, et cetera, second by Counselor Rourke. Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Mr. Manager, this is a call we get often, 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 especially down at Edwards Field, which, you know, when we, when we look at Edwards Field, to me, it should be a multipurpose field down there. It, it should be something that should be synthetic because you could use it for multi-use, you could use it for lacrosse, soccer, and more, and it would be the state of the art. In, in my opinion, when we look at that field, I don't think the inner-city kid is getting the bang for his buck, or she, for the bang for their buck, because we don't have any synthetic open space in this city to get our kids out there. And we look at all of these communities around us, they have this, and this is a good opportunity, if there is money in the opera, to, to run over and say, "Okay, we should do this." And it will solve a couple health issues that are going on over there. You know, when geese go and we can't get to it before the kids get there, there's major issues, whether people want to admit it or they don't, and it, it's the truth. If we went to synthetic over there, and maybe we can partner with a, like a Lowell Catholic or something and have them pitch in where, you know, now Gage Field gets released a little bit, and you could have regrowth and everything going on. But I truly think the inner-city kid is not getting the same as other communities are getting because of this fact that we, we can't get out there early enough. I know we have collie, but I just think that we have to do something about the geese population over there. This may be one way to, to combat it and say, "Look, you know what? We can also take care of the Lowell Catholics of the world and, and try to have maybe them put money in for a maintenance process or something over there." But I think that right now would be a very good time to look at just changing that over. There's not much to do, and I understand, you know, that the contamination over there underneath, but that wouldn't play because it was mostly in the parking lot when they did those studies. I don't think it would have much play in just putting it to a synthetic, but if not, we have to find a way to keep the geese out of there or clean it before kids get there. Thank you.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a, a great motion that Counselor Gishia brought forward, and I just wanted to say thank you to him for doing that, and also wanted to note that I think the geese situation makes, makes an excellent band name, so I'm going to call dibs on that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Motion is passed. The next motion is 6.5. It's a joint motion by Counselor Janess and Counselor Gishia, request city manager have the HR department present before the auditor clerk, oversight and personnel committee, generalized trends and themes gathered from exit interviews of former employees and conducted since October 2022. Set presentation to include the city's employment recruitment and retention strategy based on general exit interview findings. Who would like to go first? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. This motion is really just designed to kind of try and get a baseline on many of the HR issues that we've been talking about in terms of employee retention and folks moving on. I feel like we've had a lot of anecdotes, that people are leaving for more money in other towns, or more opportunity for advancement, et cetera, but I don't think we have good metrics on that. And I think it's important to be able to have these metrics and understand why people are leaving solely so that we can track our progress over time. So if we kind of take a look at this every, every four, six months and just kind of realize the trends and what our, our staff are saying as they're leaving us, because turnover is inevitable, that's always going to happen, but being able to turn that, those, those interviews into actionable data that we can use to build better policies and, and to be a more welcoming place to work that can keep people around, I think it's important to just kind of get a baseline and understand where we're at. You know, the first six months of, of any new administration, there's going to be a lot of staff turnover, we understand that, and there's been a lot of stuff going on. So that's why I kind of really wanted to, to start with October. I felt like that, that gave a kind of settling-in point of view or timeframe, and then, so it gives us a, a point where we can say, "Okay, let's look at, let's look at the data we have from here going forward," and just kind of keep looking at it and keep working on it, just so that we, as a council, can, can understand what we can do to empower you as the manager to, to build your team and really, you know, have, have the folks around you that, that you need to, to get this job done. So that's, that's my logic behind the motion and, and what I'm hoping to accomplish by, by starting this. Thank you.
Mr. Manager? Are you all set? Okay. Counselor Gishia, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Thank you, Mayor Chow. You know, and again, this is just basically stems off of the Clifton-Lassen report. Basically, it's in there, this is just saying, "Okay, can, you know, the council dive further in so we can get these reports, we can go back to the personnel subcommittee and have more of a discussion back and forth." This was solely outlined in a public report, in the Clifton-Lassen report, so we're just trying to say, "Okay, we expand upon a quick report that was written." And I think this has a lot of value to understand. And even for yourself, maybe writing it, you'll gain some data that you'll be like, "Oh, okay, this is what it is." So that's really with the point of councillor Janess and myself. Co-motion this was just to see, "Okay, where are we going? How do we improve?" Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none, on the favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it, motions carry. We already taken up motion 6.6, we're gonna skip to 6.7. It's a motion by councillor Janess, request city manager have the proper department provide a report on plan to replace bicycle racks downtown that will be removed as part of the new kiosk installation project. Second by councillor Noon, councillor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This just came up as I was walking around downtown a couple weeks ago. Some of the posts that are in the sidewalk that have the parking space numbers on it have these circular frames attached to them. Those are bike racks to allow people to lock up their bikes when they come down to shop at the stores, hang out downtown, whatever they're up to. And I know that as part of the migration to the new system, the new parking system that's gonna be pay-by-plate and not space-oriented, that those posts are coming out. And I didn't know if it was all the posts or just the ones without the bike racks, but if it's all of them, what are we gonna do to, you know, replace those? You know, I know they don't get used a ton, but I did see one getting used the other day, and I went, "Yeah, that's exactly, that's what I'm talking about." So that's all that is. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
No.
You wanna defer the councillor first? Councillor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the manager. When we do this with some different bike racks, can we speak to some of the local artists and make some creative, unique bike racks for the downtown? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Sorry about that. We have been talking about this, councillor, just so you know. With the creative part, some of it was a little concern with access back and forth, but how to get that accomplished, that's something that Mr. Ryan and I have been discussing. And also, councillor Janess, to your point exactly, we had a discussion about the, I'm gonna call them the circular pieces, where they should be. So would absolutely get your report back here and try to have a couple on every side of the street and throughout the downtown, but then trying to take it one step further. Councillor Leahy, if there's something else we can do, but one of the concerns that were raised, it seems to work a little bit around the post, where it's not interfering with anybody walking, so we're trying to figure out if there's a way we could have a different style or different type of bike rack around. So this is interesting, we were talking about this, so I thank you for bringing it up, and we should have something back in the next couple, couple weeks. Thank you.
Right, I just...
Just make sure you can't sleep on them.
Councillor Leahy?
Yeah, I mean, where it's not interfering, we could go with a conventional one, but over by the parks, Lucy Lacum, the other, where it's appropriate. If we could do, be creative, that would be great, especially in front of 100 Merrimack Street for Teddy Panos, so.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none, on the favor, say aye, motion is approved and passed. We do have an executive session that we take a vote to go into, which we will adjourn from the executive session. Before we do so, any announcements? Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was asked to make the announcement for the Collidget Charter School, their fourth annual international fair, where it's full of food and show by student. It's gonna be the Saturday, May 6th, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. The address is 1870, 1857 Middletec Street. Again, Collidget Charter School, Fourth Annual International Fair. So they invite everyone, and anyone can go and have fun there. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. This Saturday, May 6th, 9:00 a.m. till noon, they'll be doing a cleanup DIY Lowell with Lowell Litter Crew at Gold Star Park, also known as Ferry Landing Park. It's right next to Consumer Auto Pots at the VFW and Bridge, right after the bridge, and it's part of the CBA citywide cleanup, I believe. And so that'll be this Saturday, May 6th, 9:00 a.m. till noon. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. First and foremost, I did start to say it earlier, I want to say thank you very much to all of the staff throughout the city of Lowell. As many of you know, we did run into a computer issue, a computer incident, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention the hard work that MIS has been doing, as well as all of our department heads, to ensure that things are moving forward. We will be doing to the best that we can for the next week. We will be moving full force with a regular meeting. And some other thing that I know the councillors were a little concerned with, all of our payroll has been updated, so payroll will go out as planned. And we want to thank all of the employees for their patience. We are on that two-week cycle that I want to say thank you again, that has been implemented pretty, I want to say, pretty much flawlessly, pretty much flawlessly. So thank you to the auditing department, the treasures department, the CFO and that, and our team. We are still in a rebuilding process. We are deliberately taking this from, we're taking this methodically, and I'm gonna say slowly, because it's the right thing to do to ensure that our system is up and running appropriately. We have appropriate computers available that are offline, that you may see in the mayor's reception room when we go in there, and that is just for some folks to have the ability to go in and do some work when it comes to motions and things of that nature. So we're gonna get back to next week. It may be a little wonky, I want to let everybody know, just a tad, but it's really just due to us uploading all of, you know, motions and motion responses of that nature. But to say thank you to the MIS department and all the department heads would be an understatement, and all the employees for continuing to move forward and moving our city forward. Thank you.
No other announcements? Before we take the vote on the executive session, just want to let the public know that we are gonna go through executive session, and we are going to adjourn from there. We will not be returning to the chamber. We will adjourn after the executive session. With that said, need a motion to go into executive session to consider and discuss matters of litigation, public discussion of which could have a detrimental effect on the city's position, by councillor Drinkwater, second by councillor Janess. Mr. Clerk, please roll call.
Councillor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councillor Gitchia?
Yes.
Councillor Janess?
Yes.
Councillor Leahy?
Yes.
Councillor Mercier?
Yes.
Councillor Noon?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rourke?
Yes.
Councillor Scott?
Yes.
Councillor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow? Three yeas.
Thank you, everyone, for watching, and again, we will adjourn from the executive session.